Bridge to order. Roll call.
Trustee, Hollenbeck.
Brynig.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Cunningham. Whitwer.
Here.
Pumbeer.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, can I ask that we stand and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I trust that the meeting has been properly posted. Can you affirm that, Lisa?
At upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Hometown Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, all right. Public appearances. Uh, I know two of these gentlemen, first two, you're already on here for agenda item.
I have some of the office agenda.
Okay.
So, Bob Saleoff, running board supervisor.
As you know, that I have not running for another term. I have so much appreciated work with you guys and gals. I'm in office until April, so please use me, but don't use me up. Whatever I can do to assist you, let me know. Different hat, Cambridge EMS. We're doing very well. We're transitioning to, um, to medical direction from Mercy Health in Janesville. We feel that they've got a very robust training program and a very robust support system. They have a hundred and fifteen different services that use them and approximately 5,000 EMTs. So they've got an incredibly, they have nine physicians that are dedicated to the program of emergency medical services. So it's a very robust program. I'm glad to do it. The transition happens at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. We're, um, you know, we're converting everything as we speak right now, but I'm very excited about this transition. I think it's going to make us a strong service. We just, we'll be pleased to know that they are not charging for this service. This is part of their mission as Mercy Hospital. And they do have Edgerton, and they do have all of Rock County, and then they have, like I say, a hundred and fifteen other services that are participating in this program. So I'm, I'm excited. You know, it's, uh, it's been very busy for us, but it's very exciting. Any questions? And then I'll appear with Steve on the trail issue.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Saleoff, for coming in front of this board. I know that you have to give us updates from Dane County. And I know you're also stepping down, so thank you. We wish you the, the best of your retirement here with government service. Uh, okay, whatever it might be, but you're stepping down. And thank you for taking the time to keep us apprised of significant developments as it relates to Dane County.
Sure. Great, thanks.
All right, thank you. Uh, gentlemen in the back there, I think you're on the agenda as well. Okay, anybody else wants a chance? Okay, um, it's public appearances. Moving on, uh, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, December tenth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion necessary?
Yeah, I do. I second it.
Yeah, but I've just seen for discussion.
Oh, that's okay. Don't worry.
Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay.
Good here.
Uh, reports. The one item that I would talk just briefly about is the Chamber of Commerce met last week on January ninth. What was that, night Thursday? Chris, you were there with me.
Yeah, I believe it was. It was their yearly.
Right.
I believe it was Thursday.
Okay, and so what they did is they introduced their board members. They talked a little bit about the highlights, the Chamber finances, their goals for two thousand and twenty. They shared some financial information, and they also talked about the, uh, the village of Cambridge and the $10,000 that was forwarded to them and how they have kept 5,000. They're going to be using that on various programs here in two thousand and twenty. They were appreciative of that. And, um, they had a good turnout. I don't know how many people were there, probably forty, something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the, that's the sole item that I can mention. Library board, uh, we had a couple of meetings. Anything you can share here, Paula?
So, uh, let's see. No, not, I'm not a whole lot going on with the library board at this point in time. Strategic planning is going to take back up in March. We are revamping our employee handbook, so we've had a couple of meetings regarding the employee handbook. Barb came and presented some budget items for us at our last meeting, so thank you, Barb, for doing that. And, uh, yeah, nothing else really. Patty, anything? Okay. Got it.
All right, thank you. Village office updates. Ms. Mullen.
Tax bills obviously went out, a lot of inquiries, a lot of tax collection. The December settlements are in the bills. We've collected about fifty percent of the taxes as of the December settlement, so that would have been January second. They're still coming in. We'll get another rush a little later in the month as the final deadline comes. You know, Barb has talked in the past, we did transfer some of the tax money into the higher interest account to collect the interest while we have the high amounts here. Doing some prep work with the new auditors, dog licensing. Foundation grant was applied for Tree City USA application. Lot of year-end paperwork and reports that are due to various different agencies. The trash and recycling switch over, a lot of inquiries and stuff at the beginning before the old bins were picked up. The first week, we had a number of calls. Got those taken care of. After yesterday's pickup, we didn't have any calls, so, um, you know, we're finalizing the list of who all has bins and stuff, working with them on that. We do still, if people still have some of the advanced bins, they did go through and make their own's pickup if people were out of town and so forth. I think they came through a second time, but our guys are now collecting them. Once we have a fair amount, they'll call advanced and they'll come pick up. You know, there's still a couple dumpsters they need to pick up and so forth, too. Lot of stuff going on with the elections, the paperwork for the village board seats we're in. We do have three people who submitted their paperwork. Eric Whitwer, Carla Geller, and Wyatt Rose all submitted their paperwork. There will be a primary February eighteenth for the State Supreme Court, so a lot of the paperwork with the state is going on with that now, and absentee's requests and the voter registrations. This week, we have training for the new handicapped accessible machines. So that's occurring Thursday. Insurance renewals were due, so we went through verifying all of our equipment, vehicles we have and so forth, creating spreadsheets, who the equipment belongs to, which department, how it should be billed and so forth. So clarifying all of that and breaking them out among the departments. Year-end payroll, um, Purdy Amundsen, updating all of the data that needs to go into payroll for two thousand and twenty. But just busy, a lot of walk-in with all of the tax bills and so forth.
Have people noticed the, uh, the new renovations up there at all?
Yes, they love them. We have had nothing but positive comments. And, you know, a lot of comments about time you guys were so crowded. It was so, you know, so nothing but positive comments.
Lisa, what is our policy here on Christmas trees? I noticed that there's a few out there. Do you have any?
The guys pick them up.
I do, are they doing that every week now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they do pick up throughout the year, brush every Tuesday. Depending on what's going on, they will pick up other times during the week if they're out with the trucks in halftime, but Tuesdays is usually their.
Looks like they had a shredder out today.
Yeah, um, the chipper, um, yeah.
And so we just, it's down there then by the, uh?
No, out at the, the dump.
Oh, the trees, we don't shred them up and then use them for chipper material?
A lot, they'll put, I have a pile out at the, the dump.
Okay.
Not down, they may have a little bit at the shop, but most is out at the dump area.
I've just noticed a few trees around that I didn't know.
When you say the dump area, do you mean out by the Lions, the Lions Club?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I don't refer to that as the dump area.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, moving on, bills. We've got quite a stack here, but I'll entertain a motion at least for approval of bills in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills and set them out.
I'll second.
Okay. Questions, discussion, anybody have anything? I had a couple in here. Advanced disposal, we just got done talking about this. Is this going to be the final bill then for them, the seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars, or is that carryover?
I'd have to look at the invoice if that was no, the bill for November. The invoice is in the, the red folder. There could be one more.
Okay.
Isn't it usually around six, isn't it usually like sixty-nine? Why is it seven?
It was the same number that it had been in the past when I keyed it in, because they usually use a previous look back to do it.
Okay. I might be thinking last year.
Okay.
And the new one will be less.
The new one is six something.
Last, last year.
And that one's in there, too. The new one is a six thousand number.
Okay.
All right.
For Badgerland.
Okay, uh, we got a couple of large ones, but one of them is eight hundred and eighty-four thousand to the school district of Cambridge.
Tax settlement.
Anything, any, any unusual items there? It's just money in and then money back out.
We collect for the taxing jurisdictions and then.
I mean, that's almost fifty percent of people's tax bills goes to the school, so.
Okay. And then I had one more, and I don't mean to pick on anybody, but Eric, looks like you get a check for a hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents.
There's a lot in there for tax overpayments.
All right.
Um, the village, um, the mill rate went down, so a lot of people who escrow, um, how many?
The escrows saved more than.
Yeah, how many were there of the tax overpayments?
Looked like a bunch of them.
Like eighty or something?
No, there's a total of seventy-two checks in that one group, and I think there were probably at least thirty that were tax overpayments.
Yeah.
I don't remember the number off the top of my head.
Okay. Eric, yours is the only one that was on the, on the board here, so I thought it merited some additional discussion. That's why. No questions, other questions here? Any others? Okay, we have a, um, a motion and a second, so why don't we go to your part of it here, Lisa? We're with the roll call.
Trustee Brynig.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham. Whitwer.
Yes.
Pumbeer.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
And McNally.
Yes. Okay. Bills are approved. Okay, moving on. Next item, the Connector Trail Committee. Good evening, gentlemen. And Steve, you're kind enough to drop off a Connector Trail, past, present, and future. So, how's our, our bike trail?
Well, just a little introduction. I'm Steve Struss, and I'm the secretary for this committee for the Connector Trail. And we have Bob Saleoff, he's also here, the, I guess, the head director. Thanks for taking time in your agenda for, for us to give you an update. Had a little handout with bullet points on there, I'm not going to cover those. I'll do it as briefly as I can here. And a lot of you know this history, you're ready, so. This started way back in two thousand and eight where the village partnered with Dane County and, and others to create a plan to connect the, the Cam Rock Trails to the south with the Glacial Drummond State Trail to the north. So it's been a long-term goal. In two thousand and fourteen, a portion of that goal was actually realized when we got a park grant from Dane County Parks and made the connection from the Cam Rock Trails, it's end right, or begin right here at the south edge of the village, and had a connection all the way through the village with a couple of safe crossings and, and the path through the West Side Park and whatnot. That was a hundred and forty thousand dollar project roughly, and seventy thousand of it was from the county, and then the seventy thousand was from the village, and, and the, the foundation shipped in on that, too. And so that was kind of phase one. We got that as far as the north edge of the village. In, in two thousand and seventeen, we got a group together, and we're kind of just roughly calling ourselves the Connector Trail Committee, to, to further explore routes going to the north, to select that best route, and then to find out how we're going to fund it. And so that, we went back to the two thousand and eight plan, but we kind of advanced beyond that with the help of Town and Country Engineering. We were fortunate enough that that committee applied for, actually, the, the village being the fiscal agent for this committee did the application, but it was on, on behalf of this committee. Applied to Dane County for another park grant, and that was for this Connector Trail. The total project is four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars estimated by Town and Country Engineering. So we applied for the fifty percent, the full fifty percent match, the two hundred and nine thousand, hoping to get maybe a hundred thousand, you know, we didn't. So we were very pleased to be awarded that full, our full ask of that two hundred and nine, two fifty. And when we had the, the meeting at Dane County, they were just very impressed with our plan. They think it's a great project. So they, they put, we were the largest grant awarded in, in that year. There were a couple others, but we were by, by far the largest. So it was, it was a great vote of confidence in, in what we're up to here. So now we're in the process, you know, it's kind of a double-edged, it's great to get that money, but now you have the challenge of raising the other half to make it happen. It's a matching grant, so we have to come up with the other two hundred and nine thousand. The good news is if we only came up with a hundred thousand, they would still match that hundred thousand. We don't have to hit that total dollar amount. But of course, that's what we want to do, is, is reach that full amount. We have five years to do it, so it's not like we have to have it tomorrow. It's, it's a long-term thing, but, but we want to, we're getting at it now, we're not waiting. But that's, that's what we're in the process of doing right now. We've applied for a number of grants, a DOT grant, a Friends of Dane County Parks grant, a small grant from a, a local church foundation, so we're, we're reaching out to whatever we think. We've looked at some national grants, but the, the, the advice from Town and Country and others is that it's, it's such a long shot and it's such a process to go through. And then if you do get the grant, the paperwork kind of kills you. So they recommend focusing more on local grants. So that's, that's what we're doing, as opposed to, say, a, a, a nationwide grant. We've talked to private donors like Trek Corporation and others, getting some verbal support, but no, no cash in hand quite yet. However, we have received five thousand dollars from Jefferson County Parks, which was a nice show of support. We also recently got five thousand dollars committed by a local company, solar company. They, I'm not mentioning their name tonight because they would like to hold a press release. So they would have like a photo op with the paper and handing the check over and a story in the paper about it. So, and that would be, again, to the village as opposed to our committee, because the village is the fiscal agent. So I'll be working with Lisa, and we'll try to find a time that works. I've reached out to the company and asked for their dates and haven't heard back yet, but that'll happen in the next, hopefully in the next month or so. We've also received thirty-eight hundred dollars here and there from different donors.
Specifically from, from the distillery.
I'm, I'm getting there.
Who, oh, I'm sorry, okay. Well, they're here.
The Cambridge, from the Cambridge Winery and the Dancing Goat Distillery. So yes, thank you, gentlemen.
Talk to me after this about what you guys need.
Yeah?
I'll, I'll find some more money if you get it.
Wow, all right, there you go, that's great. So, so that's good, that's great support, sorry, Bob.
That's great.
And, and so those fundraising efforts are going to continue. Our, our goal is to minimize the amount of money that this village, have public money that needs to go in, into this. However, a lot of donors are more apt to, to provide money if they know that there's, the village is behind it. It's a, you know, if there's a show of support locally, then they, they, you know, they're more inclined to support it themselves. So I think it's important that the village not only act as the fiscal agent, but actually put some money, you know, some skin in the game. And I know at one point there was mention of maybe five thousand dollars that could be found in the, this year's budget. I don't know where that went, but that's.
Last year's budget, possibly.
That, that's, one of the reasons we're here tonight is to give you a background, but also say, whatever the village can, can provide toward this effort would be, would be greatly appreciated. And it's matched by Dane County, so if it's five thousand, it'd actually create ten thousand dollars of effort. So that's, that's good news. We've applied to the Cambridge Foundation for five thousand dollars, and I think that, that grant application was in your packet. So, and that's, even though it's the committee, it's also kind of involves the village because the village is the fiscal agent. So it's, yeah, kind of interesting. And then, so, yeah, we're, the committees, uh, we have, we have quite a few members on the committee. You know, Mr. Saleoff here is the chair, I'm the secretary. Lisa is now on the committee as well, Mark was, but he needed a step back, so Lisa's going to be the village rep and fiscal agent. Laura Payne, who's Jefferson County Supervisor, and I see she's running again, which is good. Mary Truman, who's Jefferson County Parks. The recent, there was a recent retirement there, so now she's taken over. Brian Udovich, he's with the Highway Department, Jefferson County. Build Rolloffs, which is with Town of Deerfield, which some of this trail will be going through that town. And then we have a couple of private people, I'm not mentioning everybody. And then Tom Tabeast, who's our engineering consultant, of course, with Town and Country. And so, and there's a number of people that are, that are on the email list that just want to be appraised of what's going on, such as the Dancing Goat and, and the winery and, and others. So there's quite a few people that are on the committee but aren't really necessarily active, don't attend every meeting, but, but there's a lot of interest in seeing this, this happen. So our current goal is to make this next connection from the north end of the village up to State Farm Road, and then on State Farm Road, there'll be on-road markings to get up to Glacial Drummond Trail. We picked that because it's the, the most cost-effective, something, you know, we felt like we could, a goal we could reach and, and make that connection. But our long-term goal is to find private property that we can have off-road path on. We'd like to have as much of this trail off-road as possible for safety and aesthetics. So, you know, families with small kids and stuff are going to be a lot more likely to use this trail if, you know, if it's off-road, that they have to worry about their kids and, and traffic. And so that's our long-term goal, but, but we have to take this in steps, and, and so the first step. Lake Farm, uh, excuse me, State Farm Road and then Prairie Road are very low-traffic roads. And so we feel like even using those as a connection will be safe in, in the interim until we can get some private. And Bob's actually working, I don't know, he might want to talk about some of that, that we're actually working with some private landowners. And some are interested in, in actually providing an easement across their property so we can go all, completely off-road, which, which would be nice. So, Mr. Saleoff, would you like to add?
Just a few minor, you know, not minor, but a few details. So there are three property owners from State Farm Road to the north, and I've had discussion with two of them, actually with three of them. But there's, there's this big project going into one of those landowners, and, um, you know, there's a possibility that we might be able to interest them in maintain, you know, giving an easement so we could go straight up from the foundation property, straight up across Munson, and then up to the Glacier Drummond Trail. But that's the sec, that's the next step of this whole project. The, um, right now, the four hundred and nine is to get to State Farm Road. And, um, you know, there's a lot of positive about being able to do this. We, uh, we did commit from the ad hoc committee or from the trail committee that we would try to get twenty thousand dollars in the bank available to Town and Country should they need to do some surveying and some photos and some maps to, to provide presentations to the community. And so we have that pretty much, again, thanks to these guys, which I really appreciate, and then Jefferson County. And then the, um, the meetup with this energy company, I'd like to, you know, well, we'll talk to Lisa and get that arranged, but they, they, they want a little press over it, and I, I think it would be good they could come to a meeting or they could present this to the fiscal agent, the village, and, and that's another five thousand. So they're very enthusiastic, and I think all systems are go, you know?
Yep, we're, yep, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that the board takes five thousand dollars out of reserves to contribute to the Connector Trail effort.
Oh, that'd be so awesome.
I can second that. I think it's a good idea.
All right.
Lisa, do we have?
I don't know, I don't know if we have the money or not, but.
In reserves, we've got five thousand dollars in reserves.
Okay.
We don't think that's a problem, do we?
I just, I just think that the Connector Trail will do a whole lot for the community. I think with Jefferson County honing up that five thousand, I think with the solar company, the goal of the community to have that twenty thousand base, I mean, it makes sense. And again, I, I really do think that Cambridge is going to be the big, that, get a lot of benefit from that Connector Trail. And so I think at this point for us to put in five thousand dollars from our reserve fund, I, I don't think, I, I think that's a good show to say that we are behind it.
I will vote yes, and I agree with you, and I think it has a two-for-one impact because it gets doubled here. Okay, uh, any other further discussion before we vote?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You said that, Steve, that there's a five-year process for this? When does that clock start?
It started in February of two thousand and nineteen of this, well, not last year.
All right.
So, uh, and we had, we had discussions, we've had discussions with them, and they said they've had other, you know, communities get very close, and they're not, you know, five years is up. They generally offer a, an extension. I mean, we're not counting on that, but, but it's, it's not a hard and fast rule.
This is in the Dane County five-year plan, so they're very, very enthusiastic about it. It's unusual for them to give one grant for fifty percent of what they had, or for, you know, and, and actually, this was most.
I think it was more like, like sixty percent.
Yeah, it was a majority of the money, it's very unusual. They're very enthusiastic about this project.
Yeah, the Glacial Drummond Trail is going to be connected into Madison now, too. You know, it ends in Cottage Grove, so that finally got all the easements in order and whatnot.
And it's financed.
So now, yeah, so now people from Madison can come, hopefully.
Actually, from Dubuque. Because it, it comes all the way up and through Madison. And we'll put a little sign up there, Cambridge.
Cambridge, that way, yeah.
No, I mean, our hope is that people, it'd be a nice weekend jaunt to come out from Madison, come to Cambridge, you know, stay at a B and B, eat at a restaurant, whatever shop, and then head back the next day. So I think it's, we would promote that.
Chris, you had some other questions?
Yeah, one, one last question is, uh, we have to be cognizant of our neighbors in Deerfield and, and Oakland and everywhere else. So you mentioned that there is a lot of farmers that are interested in this project. Are there any farmers that are uninterested?
We have one farmer that is not excited about bikes going through his prop, or on the road past his farmstead. He's concerned about if he's driving a combine or something, he doesn't want to have to be watching out for people on bikes. But he's also. But he's also open to the idea of providing an easement on his property to get bikes off the road. So, so it's not, he's not opposed to bikers or bicyclists. He's opposed, not opposed, he's concerned about the safety.
Of the road.
Prairie Road. So, you know, it started out that I thought he was just very negative about the whole thing, and it turns out, no, he's just very safety conscious. And when Bob had further discussions with him, he said, well, we could, you know, I could provide an easement off my trail here, you can go around, and so that, you know, that'll be a future, future discussion. So, yeah, so there was a little resistance, to be honest.
So I, I did go to the town last night, and I talked about this, and I understand that their objective was to get the trail off the road. And with the three property owners that I've talked to, again, I don't have them all aboard, I have two of them I think are almost enthusiastic, but the other one has to do with this energy company and how that gets developed. And, and so I think there's a possibility of the town being relieved of the exposure of having this trail on the road, and I hope that they might warm up to this idea of going through private property. Again, that's in the next chapter of this, of this project.
And then I have one last question, if you don't mind. So I'm, I'm open if we have the money in our reserves to it, but I'd like to know what you have planned for future fundraising for this.
Okay, I, yeah, I have not touched on that. Thanks, Chris. The, the main one we're focusing on is a stewardship grant through the DNR. And we've had discussion, when I say we, Town and Country on our behalf has had discussions with the staff there, and they feel like it's, it's a very good fit. They think it would, if we applied, we'd have a, a good chance of getting a grant. And so I think we're going to go for the full, whatever, you know, 100,000, whatever the dollar amount is we need at that point, and go for broke, and hopefully then the village wouldn't have to ante up anymore. But we'll see. That grant is due May 1st, and so we're already working on it.
Any fundraising, other than grants?
Jefferson County's, Friends of Jefferson County Parks is going to do a fundraiser at the winery.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With the invitation of, of the owner over there, and they're gearing up for, you know, having a, having a nice fundraiser. So that's one of them. We haven't established a website yet, you know, we had, I mentioned it to Lisa, if we could piggyback on the village's website or, you know.
Your new website?
Excuse me?
Your new website?
We don't have one yet.
I thought EMT has a new website.
Yeah, but that.
That wouldn't be appropriate.
I don't think, well, it might be appropriate, but it, you know, health and so forth.
True.
But I, you know, you know.
That looks good, by the way.
Excuse me?
That looks good, by the way.
Thank you. So Dane County or the village.
I have been working with her, she's looking at some.
Excellent. So I, you know, so, you know, we can do more fundraising, of course, it takes effort, and, and certainly any ideas are welcome.
Well, you've knocked on doors, I know Mark has as well, when he was on the committee, so that has been ongoing to, to private donors, yeah.
And we're going to knock on doors right.
Right back there? The door's at the table behind you.
Thank you so much.
And others.
Yep.
Other questions here where we vote? Have you reached out to Village of Rockdale?
I have not.
They might be a good one. They would benefit from this, too.
You're right.
That's true. The Camrock connects to them.
Yep.
Good point.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for appropriation of $5,000 out of reserve to be directed to the Connector Trail. All those.
No, roll call.
Money.
Money.
Oh, okay. I kept thinking it's going to be 25,000.
No.
Twenty-five thousand is bids.
Okay, all right. Roll call, please.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Cunningham. Whitworth.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Hallenbeck.
Yes.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wow.
Unanimous.
All right, thank you, guys.
A little skin in the game.
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen, for taking time and giving us an update. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, we've got the 200 East Madison Street, the Melster site.
In your packet, I did put the response that we received from Dane County after the tests had been done, basically that we could cover with two feet of soil and put a deed restriction. If we do that, there may be some discussion as the deed restriction, the whole property or just where it is, or if we want to develop the property, any excavation has to be removed disposed of at an appropriate site. I have some questions into our village attorney. I wanted you to see this as we had received the response, but my inclination is to wait until our next meeting when we have a little more information to really look how we want to proceed then.
I just have one clarification. It's, it's not that we have to add two feet, it's that the debris has to be covered by two feet.
By two feet.
That's how I read it.
Yeah.
And it's already covered by some.
Some.
So I wouldn't imagine we're going to have to add two feet.
Not two feet over the whole.
Whole thing, correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if we go with the green space.
Yeah, yeah.
Which actually I thought was a fairly positive outcome.
I was very pleased with this response when I received it. So.
And, and the fact that, that the statement says that if the village instead pursues developing the property, any waste that is exposed during excavation would need to be removed and the site, from the site and properly disposed of. So it isn't like we have to clean it out before somebody builds there, it's when they build, then we have to go in and properly dispose of whatever's exposed, which to me also.
Whatever's opened up.
Which, yeah, which to me is also a very positive thing, because then we don't have to clean up where somebody, if we choose to develop it, we don't have to clean up where somebody's going to put in a parking lot. So I, I think, I think both situations ended up very positively for the Village of Cambridge.
All right. So what we're asking at this time is just to.
Well, just, you know, no action today, but we'll put it on the next agenda.
Take this up at the next meeting. Okay, all right. We're all good with that?
Yep.
Okay. Moving on, new business.
Do I make a motion?
I would, I would appreciate that.
Let's go through the correspondence.
Do we want to do correspondence and announcements or before, before we go into closed session?
Yeah.
So do that before I make the motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
So do you want to do the correspondence and the meeting stuff first? And that way Gary can wrap up and.
All right, okay. All right, Dane County Surveyor?
I put this letter in here just so you're aware, citizens are aware what's happening. The Dane County Surveyor's Office is doing a countywide project where they're doing all the monuments, and if you look at their maps, some of them are kiddywankas, they're trying to get everything updated. They will be coming to the Cambridge area, so this was an FYI, so the board and residents are aware that this is part of a countywide project, and our section is up next.
Does that mean they do every single property?
They are.
They find the corners of every property?
I don't know if every property per se.
Or just the main monuments?
Monuments that are there, the subdivision monuments and so forth. Yeah.
That might come in handy if the road issue comes up again. Actually, I have some good monuments in place.
Yeah.
Cool.
I always wondered how surveyors, I mean, I know President Washington was a surveyor.
It's more GPS now.
Yeah, but how did they ever do this years ago?
With chains.
Meets and bounds and all of that.
That's right.
I bet if you go to your local library, they could help you look up something that will tell you how it's serving was done in the past.
Nice plug, nice plug, Paul.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice.
You're probably right. And I'm, it's going to be one of the things I'm going to be looking at, reading.
Getting a library card?
Yeah. I've got my book on survey.
There you go.
All right. Moving on, the Village of Cambridge, the foundation grant request.
So we did do the request for the three projects we had talked about, the fishing pier, the speed sign, the replacement of the bricks on Main Street was a little high. It was expressed that we could do that in segments, so if they so wish to say, we'll give you some funding in the quotes that were included. It did have breakdowns of different sections that could be done as we went along.
You know, when I look at this, and this is just maybe a minor item, but they did, you know, for the village office, they put $39,000 in on that. Should we have a plaque that, that acknowledges that, that they contributed to that? I don't know if there's any thoughts on this. I, I'm not, I know they're not doing it for that purpose, but that was instrumental in helping us. Do we want to recognize that? I don't know. I'm just throwing it out to the group.
Has anything, any been done in the past? For all the stuff that they provide to the village, have we done any other kinds of?
No. I don't know if the library did.
Well, they're on the.
We, oh, yeah, the library there was.
Yeah. There was recognition there. All the donation wall at the library, but there are a lot of people up there. Yeah.
How about this, Mark? If they cover the entire cost of the brick paving on Main Street, we'll stamp their name in it somewhere. On each little area.
Okay, as long as we don't end up with those ceramic tiles that keep breaking again.
Correct.
That's, that's for the brickwork, and I, I know that they don't want to have their name all over town. I just thought maybe something as a plaque, you know, to acknowledge our gratitude.
And we're getting there. We're hoping to do an open house at some point, and it could be acknowledged at that point as well.
Yeah, let's do that.
In the open house.
I think that would be nice.
Okay. All right, oh, that's good. Anything else in on our foundation grant request?
Nope.
Okay. And then, lastly, our Connector Trail foundation grant request?
So I did include a copy of that as well, as we are the fiscal agents for that, so they had requested as well.
Okay, all right. I'll just go through the meetings here. Economic Development Committee meets January 20th, Water and Sewer, January 21st, Village Board will convene again January 28th, Plan Commission, February 10th, Law Enforcement, February 11th, Village Board, again here, February 11th, and then finally Library Board, February 12th.
The, the library is also, the Library Board is also meeting tomorrow in a special session. It will be a closed, the majority of the meeting will be closed session, but I just wanted to get that out, that we will be meeting as well tomorrow.
Okay, all right. Any questions or referrals to staff or future agenda items?
Have we reviewed the developers' agreement with the Cambridge, with the vineyard development?
Mary and I have talked about it some. She's going to start looking at some, once we're done with the taxes, when that slows down, we're going to look at some things from our side, talk with Mary, and we may have her come before the board then, and we'll kind of look at a overview.
Which iteration? There's four of them out there.
Yeah, and that's it. You know, questions are raised and especially for newer people on the board, for newer staff. I've been here, but I wasn't involved in all the discussions, you know, kind of an overview of where we're at and moving forward.
Just take, make sure that the contract is being fulfilled the way it was originally signed.
Yeah, so Mary and I have had a discussion, and we will be working on that and presenting something to the board.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items?
The joint law enforcement, Lisa, why are we waiting until halfway through February? We haven't had a meeting since.
We did in December.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing in January?
So it's, it is every other.
Every other month. Okay, all right. It just seems to have. Unless you want it every month. No.
That is the normal meeting.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to convene into closed sessions per se.